Everyone, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We're the city of Casa Grande. And let the roll call show that everyone is here, Gloria.
Still noted.
Actually, I'm a little ahead of myself. Jerry, you gonna do our invocation tonight?
Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry Odom.
There he is. I thought I saw him.
He's hiding over in the corner.
We all stand and pray together. Our God and our Father in heaven, we come before this evening, Father. Father, we're thankful for this meeting here together, the leaders of the city of Casa Grande. And Father, we pray that you would be among our midst and guide them in the decisions that they make. But ask you, Father, to be with the city as we continue to grow. And Father, we ask your protection upon our police officers and our firemen as they go about their duties protecting our country. We ask you, Father, to continue to be with us and bless this council meeting tonight as they discuss questions and things concerning the upcoming events in our city. Bless them, Father, and help them to make the wise decision. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. Thank you, Donna. Now, I'll let the roll call show that everybody's present. I ended my glasses on, sir.
Mayor McFarland, I will, regarding the minutes, I would move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from April 15th. And except for the record, the planning and zoning commission minutes from March 7th, the police advisory board minutes from January 10th, historic preservation commission minutes from March 25th, and the industrial development authority minutes from February 20th, as they're presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Item D1, claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the claims against the city for April 10 through the 30th as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims from April 10 through April 30th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item E is the meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on council have anything you want to change, move? All right. Seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor for tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Meeting agenda is approved. Tonight, we do have a special presentation and some recognition, so I think the first item on the agenda is the swim lessons and donation from the Elks Lodge.
Yes, Mayor.
I see them all in the front row there.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It is my pleasure to present Bob Jaworski and his fellow members of the local Elks Lodge with a special presentation regarding our swimming lesson donation.
Mr. Mayor, city council, citizens, we're very proud to support our community in any way we can, and we're very happy to work with the city council to make Casa Grande a better place for our community, for our citizens, for our kids. So we're happy to make this allotment to you.
Let me come down there.
I got something for you, too.
Surprise.
Greg.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Greg, gotta use this one.
No, no problem. No problem. This is just a little proclamation. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but this is to the County of Casa Grande Elks designated May Youth Week to honor American junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fighting recognition for their services to the community, state, and nation. So now, therefore, I, Craig McFarland, Mayor of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of May, the week in May, the first week in May, sorry, as the youth week in the city of Casa Grande, and I urge all departments of government, civic, maternal, patriotic groups, or citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in this observation. So congratulations and thank you, guys, for all the great work that you do. Perfect. So it's just in recognition of this week, they're going to donate $2,000 for our swimming programs. You guys remember this is really like I saw right there.
The fifth year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for.
Good work.
Thank you.
Do you want to make any other comments?
Just a quick note, this is the fifth year that this program has run. It's obviously used for swimming lessons for youth at the Palm Island Aquatic Center. Any youth in town can apply, and it's a very easy application form, and they can do that at the Community Recreation Center.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. I think the next item on the agenda, I guess I should've stayed down there, is F2. It's a recognition for our lead graduates. I believe most of them are here. Phil, how do you want to handle this?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to come before you and introduce members of the 2019 Leadership Academy, many of whom are here tonight, and I'll recognize them in a moment, but I just wanted to let you know that it was about seven and a half weeks ago, they were in this chamber, and they heard Mayor McFarland give his thoughts on his job and the city. They also heard lengthy presentations from both city manager Larry Rains and deputy city manager Stephen Weaver, and believe it or not, most of them came back the second week. Despite that, they did come back a second week and heard about HR and some of our administrative functions. And for the past six weeks, they visited just about every department. You have the schedule in front of you there. They have been active, they have been engaged, they've asked some very tough questions, and I think it's been a great learning experience for them and for me, being fairly new, going around to each department. And I must tell you, these departments put a lot in their presentations. They were thoughtful, they were engaging, a lot of active two-way dialogues. We also visited a lot of city facilities, even on Saturdays. We visited the airport and had an opportunity, thanks to Lindsay, to see a vintage World War II bomber. We had some pancakes, then we went over to the wastewater treatment facility. Probably not the best scheduling, my part to do that, but we did see solid waste, and that was exciting. Probably gonna rework that next year. But I really wanted to recognize them. They, you know, have given up their evenings, most of them come right from work, to engage in two and a half hours of really robust dialogue and really some good learning opportunities about the city. So with that, let me have all the members of the Leadership Academy stand and let them be recognized. Why don't you give them a great big hand? This is a terrific program, and I really do appreciate the mayor, Councilwoman McBride, Councilwoman Fitzgibbons, for having a little bit of good dialogue just before the meeting began to get an upfront, close, and personal look at what it takes to be engaged in the city, as many of you are. I think we want to expand the program next year. There's certainly room for it, and I think it's a great program. They heard the pitch to join boards and commissions in a big way, from both of you. So thank you for making that pitch, and I would predict that many of them, you'll be interacting with many of them on those boards and commissions in the very near future. So thank you very much for your support. Thank you again to the Leadership Academy. Great talk.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for participating, and it's a great program. I know that most of us up here have actually gone through the Leadership Academy, and I know we all have a place in our hearts for the program, so thank you for participating. I can. Let me get through the consent agenda. All right, item G is a consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to pull out?
Nope.
Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none.
Approval is presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, public comments is the next item on the agenda. Item H, I have one here, but I think Kurt's already spoken his piece and gone home. So I don't, Kurt, you're not here, are you? No, okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item, which is item I, I1.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into a five-year contract with Billy Casper Golf for golf maintenance services at the Dave White Golf Course. Five years ago, the city made the decision to privatize the golf course maintenance at the Dave White Golf Course. This summer, in June 30th, that initial contract expires. So this fall, we've been studying the scope of services, and we revised the scope of services, put out a RFP in January. We had four firms, excuse me, we had five firms send in. We interviewed four of those firms, and the Billy Casper Golf Company was selected as the best and most responsive company out of that process. Billy Casper Golf is a national company with 30 years of experience. A couple of the things that we really liked, they obviously met all the conditions of the RFP, but they offer a unique proposal that provides a transparent model, excuse me, model of operation. In this model, Billy Casper Golf is paid a flat monthly fee, and all additional work is charged on a time and material basis. This model provides us the most flexibility and makes Billy Casper Golf a true partner that will be held responsible for their expenses and allow the city to have full input on the maintenance standards. Within this model, any expense savings are retained by the city of Casa Grande. The city will have complete flexibility in adjusting the maintenance standards throughout the length of the contract, should that be necessary. So we felt those were really good points that we could use as we move forward in the golf course maintenance. A couple of other highlights of their plan is that they will provide us with a detailed agronomic plan that we can adjust from year to year. They obviously have great communication with weekly, monthly, and annual reports. They have great internal training of their employees, and then they have a, they share best practices throughout their network with the solution center, they call it, and we were very impressed with that, as all of their facilities are trying to share practices that could help other facilities. The golf course is an enterprise fund. The first-year contract is $521,578, and it goes up an average of 1.15% per year over the five years. So with that, I would stand for any questions. One other point, we do have members of the Billy Casper Golf Company here. Should you have any specific questions for them?
Bob?
With golf course being an enterprise fund, is it subsidized by general fund dollars, or it's an even enterprise?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and specifically for Councilman Huddleston's question, we transferred a subsidy, a general fund subsidy for some years now. So essentially, we've been building a budget that is self-sustaining.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
I had one question that was interesting to me, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I notice that Falcon Golf didn't apply. Is it because we're switching the, how we do it, or?
No, they actually did apply. They've changed the name of their company.
Oh, okay.
To Southwest Golf.
Okay, I was curious why they'd been doing it.
Yes, no.
And so, is it gonna be similar, because I was reading the contract, and they use our equipment? So who's responsible for maintenance of our equipment, and how does all that work?
So we're in the process of negotiating those points, but we're asking the contractors to provide the equipment, and so they will utilize some of our equipment that we have remaining, but we're working with them on the exact language and how we're gonna work through that, but we're asking them to provide the equipment in that regard.
And this is only for the golf course maintenance, not like the front house?
Correct, correct. The golf course operations still remain city employees.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Steve. Gloria, an eight. Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3135. In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Billy Casper Golf LLC to provide professional maintenance and service for the Dave White Golf Course for a term of up to five years, authorizing expenditure, public funds to Billy Casper Golf for services performed at the Dave White Golf Course and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 3135 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, I'll move to item I2. We consider ordinance number 1152.7.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Tonight, I am presenting on this particular item. It is an ordinance asking council to consider the amendment of a land purchase agreement between the city of Casa Grande and the Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Limited Partnership. For our public in attendance and watching this evening, and for the council's benefit, we, in 1988, the city of Casa Grande entered into a land purchase agreement with Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Limited Partnership by where the partnership could acquire, through an option, approximately 378 acres from the city in the northeast side of the Casa Grande Mountain. The partnership acquired several additional parcels in this area with the intent of creating a vision to develop the southeastern entry to the city along the two major interstates of I-10 and I-8. Over the course of time, Mr. George Chasse and the partnership have been very dedicated to accomplishing this vision. They worked diligently to gain the zoning entitlements for a mixed-use master plan community that would include a commerce park, and as the mayor and council is aware, you have recently approved a planned area development zoning overlay on that particular parcels that would allow for the theme park development known as Dreamport Villages. In addition to these entitlements, Casa Grande Partnership has also spent a considerable amount of resources to get approvals from the Arizona Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration, the approval for the Henness Interchange Interstate, Henness Interchange on Interstate 8. Over the past two years, the partnership has worked closely with the city to compete for the Dreamport Villages project. The developers of the project ultimately selected Casa Grande due to the location, the planning efforts that had been achieved on the assembled parcels, as well as the collaboration with the Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Partnership. This ordinance this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I said, is for an amendment that is very straightforward. I can't recall the last development agreement or amendment that is fewer than five pages, and that's what we're looking at this evening. So let me just spend just a minute really highlighting the two areas that I believe are critical to this amendment. In essence, what Mr. Chasse and the partnership is requesting from the city, or requesting the city to consider, is that the biannual option payments that are due to the city of Casa Grande in the amount of $12,500, that those be deferred, to which time the, a closing would occur, and that we would extend the term of the development agreement and that potential closing, and those option periods for a one-year additional period through June 30th, 2021, so a one-year extension. In addition, the amendment would allow for an additional one-year extension through June 30th, 2022, if the partnership has made all option payments and further has taken down parcel F, which is approximately 51.93 acres that are owned by the city today. The partnership has agreed to pledge one parcel of land, parcel 5.11-22-010B, which is approximately 3.26 acres. They would actually sign over a deed of trust for the city that would serve as collateral for that, those deferred option payments of $12,500 a year, and at which time, and if any time, the city manager felt that additional land would be necessarily necessary to adequately secure the deferred option payments, they would also pledge a second parcel for, it would be a total of just over five acres of land that would be pledged for any deferred payments. And from a staff's perspective, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending this third amendment to the, to the land purchase agreement, and I would stand for any questions.
Okay. Yeah? Yeah, Bob?
So the, I know we've been over this, but the pledge for the land is just collateral if the, if the payments are not made. And all we're doing is we're extending the payments out a couple of years, so we're not, the city is not behind on any promised or contracted monies that are involved in this. We're just basically extending the option out.
Correct.
Okay.
I do understand it. I do. It's actually just one year, isn't it, Larry?
Was that an additional one year? Well, we're, two years. We're essentially extending it through 2022 if they buy parcel F.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Powell?
I just agree with staff. It's a very straightforward agreement. It's somebody that's put about 20 years in, in our community and kept the faith in being able to do this in Casa Grande, so having a two-year extension to have the option to be successful on this, I think is fair, and as Councilman Huddleston just pointed out, it's not gonna cost us anything, so.
Okay, seeing no other comments, and can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 1152.7. In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the third amendment to the Casa Grande, Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Limited Partnership and authorizing execution by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1152.7 as presented.
Seven, second. Okay, so we moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is L, L1, public hearing for annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is a public hearing as required by state law on a proposed annexation for some city-owned property. The site is 144 acres that we have purchased just to the west of the existing Ed Hooper Park for purposes of future park expansion. According to state law, we have filed an annexation petition for this property, and now are holding the public hearing as the next step in the annexation process.
Right, no, I know exactly where it is.
So this gives you a little bit of understanding how this would be an extension of our corporate boundaries. Our corporate boundaries are in gray. The white is currently the unincorporated area. So to the north of the park, the Colonial de Sol project with development would still be in the unincorporated area. There'd be a 150-foot gap, if you would, between our corporate boundaries over to the remainder of the Pinal County unincorporated area. That gap is necessary so we don't create a county island that is prohibited by state We find that the area is a logical and appropriate annexation area in regards to the current boundary of the city. The area meets all legal requirements for annexation as have fourth and Arizona revised statutes. About a blank petition and the map were filed with Pinal County Recorder on April 15th. So at this point, as I mentioned, council's being asked to hold a public hearing on the annexation, and the public hearing was required to be held within the last 10 days of a 30-day wait period that begins with the filing of the annexation. So about 20 days ago. After the public hearing, basically, we will get the city signature on the annexation petition, after which time, we will schedule an annexation ordinance for council's consideration to formally annex it and give the property its initial zoning, and that ordinance is scheduled to be considered at your June 3 meeting, your June 17 meeting, and effective in July. So that summarizes my presentation, and it'd be, now would be the time to open it for a public hearing.
Okay. Does council have any questions before we do that? Okay. All right, then this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to any public comments on, on this particular item. Anyone who would like to step forward? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the floor, and I'll call for, what are we looking for here? No, there's just need of, no, that's it, that's it, just a public hearing. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. All right. So actually, we're onto reports, then. So why don't we start there, and Lisa, we'll start with you. How's that?
Let's see, on the 29th, we opened the CG Helps Resource Center, so for any of you that attended, I really appreciate everything. It's something that we've been working on, the mayor's task force on homelessness has been working on for about 18 months now, and so we now have the resource center at the, park, the Park Center. So it was great. It was a great event, a lot of support. I think a lot of the agencies and community are excited that we have this. I know Sergeant Ingstrom today gave a situational training to some of the staff and agencies that are going to be, you know, having services there at the resource center, just so they're aware of the, you know, the element, the citizens that are gonna come in and out. So he did a really good job, and, you know, we talked a little bit about safety downtown, and, and he did talk about, you know, what the place had been doing over the last two years. And Rena, I know you've been part of that, you know, over the last couple of years, there's been some businesses downtown that have been concerned with some of the safety with the homeless, and I think with the community getting together and the police department working with them, you know, it seems as though, you know, people are, you know, happy to see that a lot of the crime has gone down. So we're excited. He's, you know, it seems as though the police department is excited to have a place that they can, you know, send people to and get the resources they need. So appreciate all your support. Let's see, the recreation center, how can we not bring that up? Sorry, I'm first, guys, I get to bring it up.
I am.
No, it was, it was great, and, you know, as long as I've been on council, it's something that we've been talking about and going through and trying to figure out a way to get it, and, and, you know, the, just partnerships, and it was just so great to see, you know, it come to fruition, and, you know, with the boys and girls. they can, you know, send people to and get the resources they need, so appreciate all your support. So, let's see, the Recreation Center, how can we not bring that up? Sorry, I'm first, guys, I get to bring it up. No, it was great, and, you know, as long as I've been on council, it's something that we've been talking about and going through and trying to figure out a way to get it, and, you know, just partnerships, and it was just so great to see, you know, it come to fruition, and, you know, with the Boys and Girls Club, it's just a great partnership, and it was just so exciting to see everyone there and the excitement, and people are just shocked that, you know, we have something like that in the community, so, you know, just to staff, Steve Godge, I mean, you came in right at the, I mean, the critical time, I mean, we'd like threw in the fire when you came, and...
His hair was black when he got here.
But, no, literally, you've done such a fantastic job on that, so, you know, thank you for everything you and your staff have done, and of course, you know, Brad and Larry and everyone else, you know, but I know, literally, you came in at that critical point, and you executed it, you know, wonderfully, and it was just so nice to be there today and see it come, so, so thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. Bob?
It's a good era in Casa Grande to be on council and to be a citizen here. What Lisa said, the Recreation Center, Boys and Girls Club, how impressive is that? Attended the opening for that today. I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Resource Center, and I was fortunate enough to be invited to the Pinal Forty Gala that I know you were at, Mayor, and Matt. Really exciting things going on in the city and the county, and I was going to add the discussion today from Hayden Construction about the Recreation Center, him mentioning all the improvements going on at Karm McNatt. I mean, that's, I'm sure that's going to be one of our next ribbon cuttings, and I'm looking very forward to that as well. So, that's all.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Mary?
Okay. I want to give another thanks to Rena and the ULI and all the folks that did come down. I've been part of, we've had two different plans for the downtown since I've been on council, and this one has meat in it, it has ideas, it has jumping off points, it has things that we can see and we can do, and there's an enthusiasm, and really appreciate all of the other folks from the downtown area businesses and other businesses that attended that. It was almost an all-day session, and it was really, there wasn't a boring moment to it the entire time, so really want to thank on that. Of course, I'm really excited about the Community Center, it's been a long time coming. I can remember Matt and I doing our road trip, and Dick, I think you were part of it too. We did a road trip, and we went to see three different community centers in that, and I have to say, I think ours is the best, but it really is, but it's been a long time coming. I really love the Boys and Girls Club component to this. We talk about partnerships, and this is such a partnership, and through all, everything everybody's saying, and then I can't remember who was talking about that, yes, at 2:30 this afternoon, the first group of kids are going, and I just got goosebumps, it was like to see these kids going from, not that this was all that bad, but to be able to go from here all the way over to that Community Center, and the donations and everything that went through, and, you know, kids notice these things, they know and all, and so it is just, it is wonderful, so I love that component to it. The Karm McNatt, cities, you talk about, what are the city duties? What are we supposed to do? What is our job? Our job is safety, infrastructure, roads, and to build our community, and between the different projects that we've done, we're building on that over and over again, and this annexation, even though this wasn't a big deal with this hearing, and that the annexation of this piece of land here is just going to continue on to our inventory, and it's going to fit in beautiful pieces of what's going on out there on Pinal, and I like the idea that we're spreading, spreading everything out throughout the city, so I thank you for that. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Mary. Matt?
We got a few things, thanks. I got to go to a meeting about the Mosaic Festival, the second iteration of it, because we got a, Rena worked on a grant through the Flynn Foundation, and now we're going to continue that for a second year, and the reason I ask you, what's the date, Rena?
Sorry?
What is the date of it?
The 18th of November.
No, for the festival.
Oh, sorry, first Sunday of November.
Put you on the spot. Okay, first Sunday of November. Yeah, so, so we're trying to make that a bigger event than it was in the past, and change it, and bring that portion of the downtown to be defined as the Arts District, so that's what I was talking about, bringing the Arts District, the Downtown District, and whatever the other, well, yet-to-be-named area down there, all together in one thing, so that was an exciting meeting. And the mayor asked me to go for him to that, and we also talked about having a social media app or in a contest on the app, and I think the mayor finagled a free family membership for one year. That's the first Steve's hearing, and I apologize, but now it's on the record, so, that would be the prize for winning the social media contest.
I'm just trying to help, Steve.
Yep. Sorry, Mayor.
Larry knows about it.
Okay. We had the annual day of shredding, again, for the Youth Commission, we shredded over 5,400 pounds of paper that day, and our total since 2008 is about 150,000 pounds of paper shredded in this community. They raised about $1,528 in donations, sponsored generously every year since 2008 by First American Credit Union, and we were back at the original location this year for various reasons, and it worked, we got it to work out really well. I was a little nervous at first, and that's in no small part because of Carl Montoya and his organization as well, and Greg Garcia and the Public Works Crew, they had a lot of people out there helping us, and they also ran our e-cycle, so we got, you know, thousands, a couple thousand pounds of e-cycle as well, we're estimating, so we got it all done, everything set up, and it went, it went great. Speaking of Youth Commission, applications are available on the website, they are due May 16th, and the interviews will be on the 17th, I'm sorry, on the 18th, which is Saturday in May. And Recreation Center was, everyone talked about, but it's better than I imagined it was going to be, which I'm just blown away, so I'll let that, everyone talks about it. Ribbon cutting, I attended for Homebridge Mortgage, and they did the ribbon cutting out at Mission Royale in the Express Homes, and they're looking for an office as well. But the neat thing about this company is they came in, they're becoming a part of the community, because they sponsored the teacher training at the elementary school district, so they're partnering with the elementary school, and also helping teachers get loans for affordable housing, so that's a neat, that's why I want to throw that in, it's really neat, neat thing they're doing. I went to a Flynn seminar this past weekend for the Flynn Brown Foundation, and Paul, I learned this neat thing, and I'm not just saying that because I actually learned it this weekend, is it's important to include artists on all different committees in the city, and I'm thinking especially general plan, because, as I know, being married to one, they see things a totally different way than someone like myself would, so I went to a whole thing about listening and having artists on these committees, so that's a new thing I'm going to be looking at, so just so you know, it's important to reach out to the art groups.
Take note.
Yeah. And last thing is, James Gagliardi and the group down in planning got me a map of the trails, it's really big now, so I might be able to see it, so I'm working on drawing some more lines and getting some more input from people to get our trail system back and going with the impetus being our Rec Center. And sorry that was so long, but that concludes my weeks.
Donna?
That was okay. You know, just ditto on the Community Center, all of us were there, and it was so cool to be standing at the door welcoming people to come into their Community Center, not ours, and so it was really exciting. I will tell you that I did go back this afternoon to do my 10,000 steps before the meeting, so I was on the track the first day.
Challenge accepted.
I just wanted to mention a really big thank you to Lisa. I know there was a lot of people involved with the Resource Center opening, but your leadership on that was amazing, and with Cara and United Way, I mean, your committee just blew that out of the water, so kudos to you on that. I wanted to mention also that the City Trust Board met this past week, and I'm privileged to sit on that with a number of folks, and I really want to give a shout out to Selena and her staff, because, you know, when we're talking about employee benefits and insurance and all that stuff, it's really, it's tough, and their staff has just done an amazing job getting the information out to our folks, to the people that work, you know, with us every day as employees, and we've, I think all of us have gotten some good feedback about the sessions that they've held, and I think it's really important that we understand the work that they get, go through to do that, so Selena, thank you very much. And I would be missed to say to the Leadership Academy, your challenge when you leave here is to go home and get on our website, because the boards and commissions, we have some openings probably, or we have near openings, so there should not be one position open, and I will hunt you down, so, I promise you that. We want to keep those full, but I do appreciate, as being a graduate of the Leadership Academy, it paved the way for me to know about the city, and so you are now part of Elite alumni, and wear those shirts proudly. And lastly, Foster Care Awareness Month is in May, I say that as we have 1,200 children in foster care in our county, and we need to do more for them, so with that, that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Powell?
Well, I just wanted to start off by letting Matt know that I've become an artist. In my retirement, my wife has taught me how to paint the house. The, I don't want to throw water on things, but I've got about three things relating to water. We had a meeting of the, I'm a member of the National Resource Conservation District for West Pinal, and there's three different districts in Pinal, and what's going on right now is the farmers, most of them gave up their wells to get their water through the CAP. Well, the CAP disappeared, and they're right now, they're trying to, Pinal County is the worst shape of any county in Arizona, and we're the fifth in the nation in farm revenues. I mean, we're really an agricultural county. What the, what has begun right now is the state is going to require that everybody follow 40% of their farm land, and Mary, you came from a farm family, and you know it's hard to make a living with every acre, and it's going to be harder with the acreage. The, they need to get money paid to them, which was promised, but they haven't guaranteed it, to put wells back into, the pumps back into the irrigation districts, not for every farmer, but for the irrigation districts to be able to send water out to the different ones that are involved with them, but it, there's a lot of, a lot of depressed people in the ag community right now. It doesn't look good, and it doesn't look good for Pinal County, because that's probably about 40%, and Casa Grande. We've got so many ag-related businesses here, if ag starts to disappear from our portfolio, we're going to lose a lot of the people that do the milk, the four factories, three factories that deal with milk, if we can't grow alfalfa here and do those kind of things, we'll lose that, so that came up, and this is just informational, and then the, they're going to want to work, I think, with the National Resource Conservation District, West Pinal, with the city, on some of the drainage that's coming into the Santa Cruz Wash to try to make that better. A farmer on that area is having probably with, problem with his property that it's being interdicted, so the, there's also an Ag Business and Water Council meeting that I'll be attending, and then the Pinal County Water Augmentation Commission meeting, and it's getting interesting at the commission, the, one of the things that there was article about, it kind of faulted us for having a million dollars in the bank, and what they're talking about right now is using at least half of that or more to buy water, and that's what augmentation's about. A million dollars doesn't go far with water. You can buy some, but they, what they're, they augment, they don't, but, so, they are definitely focused on trying to get some of this water available and buy it up and make it available to whoever needs it in the area, but the, it still bodes, it's a dismal area, water is right now, it really is, the damage that's being done to people, the, we've got, we've got settlement, or like, one of the things going out west of Phoenix is over one of the best aquifers in Arizona, and they plan to put 300,000 new homes there, and it just seems almost unfair to let them use that much of the underground water in our state, because it will take a lot of it, so really hoping that some people will step forward, and we need to work, obviously, on a new source of water in Arizona, or else we're going to be, I mean, this has been a wonderful week and everything, if everything's up, I don't mean to bring it down, because I'm thrilled to death with everything that's happened, and it's a fun time to be on city council, because there's so many things happening, and trying to keep this guy out of trouble's been good, but he, he's been a good leader, and I want to pat us back, and Donna, I know that you've carried the torch, and Matt's went on the, on the center, and I think, for so long, we had not the money to do it. We had, we had the okay of this public to do it, but we had not the money to be able to do it, so finally, it's come together to where it's been done, and it exists, and it was, it's beautiful to look in today, it really was, so, that concludes my comments, Mayor.
Keep on for yourself.
Oh.
Didn't you get one? Why didn't you take one?
I actually got one of these days, I attended.
Oh, you attended the meeting? Good for you. First of all, just a big thank you to, and congratulations to the 2019 Leadership Academy. Congratulations on your graduation and going through the program. It's a, it's a great program, and you all should be honored, and you are being honored, and we appreciate you, your participation, so, thank you. And I know Lisa and Donna already talked about the Resource Center, but really just a big thank you to Cara, United Way, really to the city also, for the city's participation, and then, you know, really Lisa and Donna, myself, in terms of the Homeless Coalition, it's been a great program, and we have a lot more to do, a lot more coming up. Last week, I attended the Mission Heights College Signing Day, which was rather, really exciting for them, was a day when they reveal what college they go to. Very impressed with the, with the school, with the Mission Heights Preparatory School, and the principal over there, Amanda Mace, she does a, she does a great job, so. We had the I-11 public hearing this last week, I know many people went to that, it actually was packed in there, and was talking about the alignment of where I-11 comes through Casa Grande, so it was rather interesting to see. If you have any comments or anything you want to check it out, you can go to ADOT's website and look up I-11, they're still taking comments on the corridor, so if you want to add your two cents, go to the website. This morning, I had the opportunity, and I want to say Happy Nurses Day, today is actually National Nurses Day, and this week is National Nurses Week, from May 6th through the 12th, so hug a nurse, tell them thank you this week, and, you know, there, it's, I just found out this morning, it's the most admired profession in the United States, for like the 17th year in a row, so, so anyway, I was at Banner Hospital this morning, and they were giving out awards to their nurses, and I was privileged to be there, and I want to thank Banner Casa Grande for allowing me to participate in that program, it was, it was good, it was, it was heartwarming. Obviously, everybody's mentioned it, because everybody was there, the Community Center grand opening, and the Boys and Girls Club grand opening, so excited to see it, it's an amazing facility. Now we just need to go out and use it, so I can lose some weight. Let's see, just some reminders, next week, we have our council budget meeting on the 15th of May, which is open to the public, if you want to go to some mind-numbing meeting, it's all day, and it's all about numbers. But if you're interested in that kind of stuff, please, please do show up, it is open to the public, so it's eight, eight to four, and it's up at our public safety, at the safety building up on Val Vista, so mark your calendars. And then that afternoon, there's a, the Daughters of the American Revolution... And then, that afternoon, there's a, the Daughters of the American Revolution are doing a community service award for Kim Vandenberg. She's the, she kind of volunteers, she's the head person over at HOHP Office, which is right downtown next to Food City, and that's from 5:30 to 7, if you're interested in that event. We've also got the Pinal Alliance for Economic Growth and Luncheon on Tuesday, May 14th, and that's from 11:30 to 1:30, and we'll have special guest speakers there. It's going to be a fireside chat with myself and Peter Hessenkamp, who is the VP of Global Supply Chain for Lucid, so that'll be very interesting. We're also going to have somebody from Nicola there as well. And what's the other company that's going to be there?
JLL.
JLL, what's J?
General Land Brokers.
Oh, okay. General Land Brokers will be there also. So, it's going to be an interesting luncheon. It's, I believe it's out in Eloy Ropes and Ranch, and again, it's 11:30 to 1:30, and if you want to register, you have to probably go to Pinal Alliance for Economic, is it pinalalliance.com? I think it's just pinalalliance.com.
I think so.
Yeah, so you have to have your registration in this week. And then, next week, also, on that same day, on the May 14th, 5:30, I'll be hosting the National Honor Society Induction Ceremony at ASU Prep, so that'll be, that'll be fun to participate in that. And then, we have the next pub meeting for the, we're changing the name to Casa Grande Helps Mayor's Task Force, or at least we think we are, we're working on the name, and that is from 3:00 to 5:00 on Thursday, May 16th, and we're going to have that meeting out at the new Community Center in the multipurpose room. So, it's a big room, we can have a lot of people, if you're interested in attending. That'll be from five, or 3:00 to 5:00, again, on May 16th, and it will be out at the new Community Center. It'll be probably one of the first meetings, I think, that will be held there in their facility, besides my State of the City. And then, the Pinal Partnership on Friday, May 17th, is at breakfast, it's going to be on, it's going to be on home building, so it should be an interesting seminar, it's on home building in Pinal County, and it's going to have a panel of some of the largest home builders in our county. So, if you're interested in that, that's at 7:30, and it's going to be all the way up in Cantera Country Club, so it's a bit of a drive, but it'd be worth the drive. And that's all I've got. That isn't enough. Anybody else? Any other comments? Larry, anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Then, this council meeting is adjourned.